Call the order, town of Prescott Valley Works Study Session, November 14th, 2019. Clerk please call the roll. Present.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman is absent this evening. Councilmember Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Packard?
Present.
And Councilmember Schumacher?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. We'll just jump right into discussion items three A, Yavapai Justice and Mental Health Coalition Update. Come on down, ma'am.
Good evening.
Welcome. I'll pull that towards you. There you go.
Okay. How's this?
Perfect.
My name is Baya Thayer. I am the Executive Director of the Yavapai Justice and Mental Health Coalition. And so I just wanted to spend just 10 minutes letting you know that a little bit about this coalition and the mission and some of the initiatives that we have going on here in Yavapai County and affecting Prescott Valley. So we are a community-wide collaborative effort to address the needs and support the communities, especially around some of our most vulnerable community members. Those are people who are with unmet or unsuccessfully met mental health needs, substance abuse needs, and who come into contacts with the justice system and who our law enforcement is encountering on a regular basis and whom our judges are encountering on a regular basis and trying to assist and get support for. We have a fabulous coalition filled with a lot of our community stakeholders in the justice system, in law enforcement, probation, our behavioral health providers, the school superintendent's office. It's a grand array of folks who are looking at different ways, of course, of trying to keep our community healthy and safe. And one of our initiatives is called Reach Out. It began in the jail officially back in March of 2018. It was based off of some other projects that were already going on in the jail. And this is a way of, we have some civilian release coordinators who are able to screen every individual who comes into contact in the jail who's coming into booking if they wish to be screened, and then provide a post-screening report to your judges that could indicate that this person has risks for mental health needs, substance abuse needs, and other risk factors as well that would make success in the community a little bit difficult, such as employment, transportation, the jail's kind of far away, housing, veteran status, if they are going to be in the jail for a while, perhaps there's children at home that can benefit from a mentor. And we work closely with these individuals, anybody who states that they would like to be connected to services, who have been connected in the past, or perhaps the judge has ordered that we need you to get reback, re-engaged in into your treatment plan and connected with services. And so we have release coordinators working around the clock with these individuals. We had received some pilot funding dollars from the state legislature and, among other places as well, and had indicated that we would pull in outside evaluators to look at our data to see how we were doing after the first year. So between March of 2018 and March of 2019, that's part of the data that's in that media release to you all, indicated that our release coordinators had had contact with 4,800 individuals and supported 1,100 of them in connection to services. Now, that has continuously grown. We are getting about 95% of the people now who are being booked in because we're fully staffed and we're trained, and so those numbers will continue to go up. So then what we wanted also to look at was, what are these people who have indicated that they need help, what are they showing that they need help in? And so for mental health needs, about 44% of the people who had participated in the screening have high to medium risk for mental health needs. And we're at about 39% with substance abuse needs. And so those individuals, we're definitely trying to connect with our community providers. We're also looking at 45% unemployment, 25%, around 24% of folks who are homeless as well, and people not having a ride upon release. So we're working with our housing partners and with the Veterans Association, work the employment support groups as well to try to pull people back into support services. So then we asked NAU, the Center for Health Equity Research, who was our outside evaluator, to look at this data that we have and what are we doing with recidivism rates? So recidivism, we have defined, the coalition has defined, as new charges. So individuals that we have come into the care of the county sheriff's office, has agreed to be screened and who are in our database, and the folks that we're trying to connect, what is that recidivism looking like? We do not have really great baseline data, and so this is a great time to start. Our recidivism for those individuals between March and March that we had contact with, and then it gave us another six months for them to get into trouble, looking at towards the end of September, they had a 16% recidivism rate. The closest that we could find in Arizona for new charges to compare against, like I said, it's really hard, a lot of counties aren't keeping or tracking these numbers and the data in the same way that we are, was the Department of Corrections, and that was at about a 28% recidivism rate. So we're pretty happy right now with our results. We'll continue looking at them. NAU will continue to looking at our data and helping us come up with ideas of how to make these programs even stronger and the connections even healthier as people are going in and out of the justice system and getting released. Another project that has been in play for a while is looking at pre-arrest diversion. And so that's with our law enforcement boots on the ground, coming across individuals, perhaps disorderly conduct, trespassing, parents calling their adult children, they're not on their meds, they're having a crisis, what do I do? And for a long time, it was really easy for law enforcement to feel the safest place that I can place this individual is into jail, and then they've just started in the justice system. This declines their ability, of course, for holding a job, for holding their rents, for just not staying on their medications, everything spirals out of control. So our law enforcement partners have been extremely diligent about getting a lot of training. We do mental health first aid training. We have a grant to provide that to all law enforcement, first responders, school personnel throughout Yavapai County. We do extensive CIT, which is Crisis Intervention Training for Law Enforcement. It's a 40-hour class so they can recognize signs and symptoms and understand what community resources are available. So we have two stealth mobile crisis teams throughout Yavapai County. One is Spectra Mobile Crisis and one is Terrors Health. And then West Yavapai Guidance Clinic has the Crisis Stabilization Unit, which they've provided a quick way for law enforcement to drop individuals off, to make different connections so that they can get the support that they need. So the, on the last page of the media release, there's these tiny little graphs on here that are kind of hard to see, but basically it's looking at 2017 booking numbers into the jail and 2018 calendar year booking numbers into the jail. And those numbers have gone down, close to 900 individuals coming into the jail, which is about 9% of our jail population. And at the same time, at that calendar year, we've had over 1,000 referrals to those mobile crisis teams and crisis stabilization unit by law enforcement. So it's looking like it's working. We're understanding how to divert people as early as possible from the justice system into support systems. And then again, coming at it, just in case somebody does need to get arrested, we're there again to try to connect them throughout the whole process, but that Reach Out numbers were the beginning numbers of this project. And so we're looking forward to seeing how this moves forward. We, like I said, we have some amazing partners throughout the county and within Prescott Valley, and I just wanted to let you guys know what your municipalities have available to them, the judges have available to them. I know it's really difficult subject matter, and I just wanted to give you the information out there, and I thank you for your time.
Thanks, ma'am.
One program that I'm really aware of that I didn't hear you mention, and that's Matforce's Reentry Program. Do you work with them and just didn't happen to include that? Because we're really having some successes with that program.
Matforce has been a great partner because they have so many community coaches, more than that was actually getting connected with folks coming out of the state prison system, they offered up their resources to the Reach Out program. So, and that's really great for some people who don't need like intensive intervention, but just that guidance on budgeting and interviewing, on how to look for a job, so we do connect people to community coaches.
The only problem we're having with that is getting enough volunteers, and we're working really hard on that, just so you know.
Thank you. Thank you. It takes a community, for sure.
Yes.
So what is a SUDS and an MI?
Oh, look at all my acronyms. Substance Use Disorder.
Okay.
And Mental Illness.
Okay. I like this brochure a lot, and I think one of the most important comments on this brochure for those in the audience and those listening is it says, "A 10% decrease in recidivism could save the U.S. taxpayers $635 million."
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate your time.
All right, moving on. Mountain Valley Dog Park Off-Leash Facility Improvements. Mr. Whitty, and you have some guests?
Did she identify us as being at Baya Thayer?
Yes.
It's a good official name right there.
Stuff. You see that Eagle Scout? Stuff.
Tonight with us, we have a number of guests. We're going to start with our awesome life scouts that are working their way to Eagle Scouts. So we have Kayden Maynard, Benson Morris. These are two young people that worked hard on this particular project that they're going to help present on. And then they hired this individual to be their project manager out of our Parks Division. And this is a big, awesome, totally innovative, Mr. Bruno himself is with us this evening. So very excited to have him. So we're available for a bunch of questions, but I'm going to turn it over to these young men because they have a presentation that they have put together for you, and I might even have some follow-up stuff after we're done. So, all right, gentlemen, the floor is yours.
All right, one of you guys are going to have to start this off.
Okay, so we started a Eagle project, and our Eagle project was about the Mountain Valley Dog Park. At first, it was like all really like torn down and like not well-kept, and we thought it would be good to help out the community by fixing it.
So we, me and Kayden, revitalized the Mountain Valley Dog Park, and we were able to get 37 helpers on one Saturday morning, and in total, we had about 189 hours of work. There's a picture of us planting trees at the park.
On October 26, 2019, we started at 7:30 and then finished at 12:00. A lot of people helped. We were planning on getting done at like 2:00, 2:30, but because so many people showed up, we were able to finish it by 12:00.
Yeah. We did this project to better the community and help our fellow dog lovers. There's a lot of people, whenever we are doing surveys, that use the park every day, and it's one of the last things we need to do before we become Eagle Scouts.
Nice.
We got the, the reason, the, we got donations from Lowe's, Walmart, Buzzy's Rock, Safeway, Prescott Valley Growers, and Willow Lake Rock.
Before I do that, I want to tell you, looking at you is bringing back memories for me. I'm the oldest in my family with three younger brothers. My favorite picture is the three of them as Eagle Scouts. So I want you to know I'm proud of you, and this was harder for you to do than to come up with this project, wasn't it? Well, we appreciate you and we honor you. What else, my, here's my question. What else would you like to see done at the park? Because I'm sure there's many more things that we could add to that park. Do you have any suggestions to us?
A lot of the surveys that we did said that they wanted like a lot of open space, but, oh yeah, it'd be nice to have some like canopies for shade.
Yes.
If the trees are still growing.
So I owe you guys an apology. At first, I did a Facebook post, and it talked about what was going on at the dog park, and I failed to mention you guys, and hopefully you saw my correction, and hopefully Mom and Dad at least saw it. And I had pictures of you guys on Facebook, and it was a huge response from those. I don't know if you got to read them or not, but people were very thankful for what you guys are doing. And oftentimes, we hear it, and Councilman Anderson, we had a discussion about this, we hear that there's not much for kids to do in Prescott Valley. But guess what? You guys are out there doing it. So you don't need a video game, you don't need, you know, a Playstation, you're out there making a difference, and that's awesome. Keep it up.
That's what I wanted to say too, is thank you, because what an honor for us to have you want to volunteer to do that. And also, what grade are you guys in right now?
We're in eighth grade.
Awesome. Thank you.
I just wanted, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make a comment that the town manager and myself have seen Benson two days in a row now. He, along with his mother, were at our Lions Club yesterday morning because he was honored as a student of the month, so.
Congratulations.
Welcome again. You've done a great job. Thank you.
I just want to say that I got to meet Benson and Kayden when I was a Parks and Rec Commissioner, and they were first planning the project and talking about surveys and raising money. They ended up getting the grant, and I'm really proud of you guys. Thank you for the work you did.
Good job. So to add a little bit more information, because these young men are just a little too modest here, I followed up their slide presentation with just a little extra in here. So the scouts came to us, they were itching to find a project, of course, all right? So they visited with our assistant town manager and narrowed things down to the dog park. So in doing that, we went out to the site, we did a lot of different review. These young men also learned a lot in regards to drones and all the operations behind that. They got to meet some other members of our team in Channel 56. We sat down at the drawing table, we went through a lot of review in regards to the park site, what was there. As they mentioned, they did surveys of the users that were there, trying to find out different information about the different elements that are current, what was being sought, all kinds of fun stuff. Then they took their entire plan, they presented it to the Parks and Recreation Commission for their approval. They met this really mean lady in the yellow jacket, but they got through it, nothing, nothing went bad, so everything was thumbs up. This is a aerial image, then when we were out there working the drone and doing all of that, this is a little bit of a before image from up above. This is an after image, and we're going to show a few images of comparison, as well as some activities and work. So as you see, the boys in total, they received one donated tree, they planted a total of six, they put down over 70 tons of decomposed granite, they did a lot of earthwork that was out there. All the perimeter fencing, they literally dug down in order to get back down to the base of that fencing, so them and all of their volunteers were hard at work. In your lower right-hand and left-hand corners, you're going to see a lot of those new obstacles that they put in there for all of our fuzzy friends to have fun with. There's a little bit of before and after. This is the small dog park side, so they renovated, brought in new attractions, doing all that fun stuff. Again, a lot of dirt work out there, a lot of cleanup. And our big dog park side, again, quite a bit of cleanup in regards to the before and after, and a lot of new attractions up there, a lot of hard work, again, a lot of collaboration between these three young men right here in regards to the work out there. And they came up with the design in regards to the bridge, is that what we call that? So that they're the ramp, okay? So that's a new fun item that's out there for everybody. And then, as they mentioned, and as Councilmember Hunt mentioned, we received a grant, and this came from the National Association of Realtors, who locally sponsored our application by the Prescott Area Association of Realtors. That was a $4,500 windfall that went into this project. Now, the boys mentioned some of the names of those donors that came in. Well, don't be fooled in regards to a bunch of names, because basically what they found was somewhere around an additional $2,500 that went into that. And there's still elements that are not in the dog park yet, because we're still working on those as we go through. But please remember these two awesome young men, there's a couple of my new buddies, they're from Troop 7093, and I think they're well on their way to earning their Eagle Scout recognition. So congratulations, guys.
All right, guys, and a little bit of an appreciation. This just says, "Thank you for your leadership and efforts in the renovation of the off-leash dog park. We acknowledge your contributions to the town and hereby award this certificate to you guys."
Before you go away, gentlemen, while you're getting your picture taken, I want you to go out and tell the other young men and women how much we as a council appreciate you, and what a difference, a positive difference you're making in our community. And we recognize and, and we're just so proud of having you in our community. So go tell the other young people that we welcome them and their ideas.
And before we finish up here, I think the man Bruno has a few words to say in regards to, I have a question for you, Bruno.
Thought you were going to get off, didn't you?
So how was it, how was it working with these two and coming up with a plan and doing what you needed to do? So.
They worked really hard.
Good job. Nice job.
What did they work hard at, Bruno?
They raked a lot of DG, I'll say that.
Okay.
And drills and tools.
So what do you guys think about Bruno? Good, huh?
And it's harder to plant a tree than you think it is, isn't it? It's a lot of work.
I also want to congratulate the parents, because I don't think these apples fell far from their parents' tree. Thank you very much for the fine young men that you're raising in our community.
Bruno's kind of like the guy from Harry Potter, right? Huh? Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Parks and Rec Master Plan Survey Results. Welcome, sir.
Okay. Tonight with us is Mr. Mike Swetts. He is with Proz Consulting. You have heard from him a little earlier in the year. He is with us this evening because he's going to provide us with some follow-up for information related to our community input sessions, as well as then also our survey coming from our citizenry that we sent out about a month and a half ago. And so we've compiled all of that different information, so he's going to give you an update on that. And then he's put some good words in my ear that he wants to come back again in January and have even more good, fun conversations with us as all too. So without further ado, Mr. Mike, have fun.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to, this is kind of the first installment related to kind of key findings, and this is exceptionally important because Parks and Recreation, at the end of the day, are supposed to be used by our public. are supposed to be used by your public. And so what we wanted to kind of tee up today is just a quick snapshot of what we'll cover today in about 20 minutes or so. Influencing factors, demographics, focus group and stakeholder input. We had done a lot of face-to-face conversations with members of the community and the public at large. We've gathered some information from the website participation we'd like to share with you. The meat of the presentation will be around the statistically valid survey. We'll take all of this information, kind of tee it up for our prioritized needs, and then share with you the next steps in terms of how we're using this information and the type of information that you're going to see in January. So one of the key components, obviously, with any Parks and Recreation Master Plan is understanding the growth in your community. And so if you look at this trend, you're growing at a rate of about 1.7% annually, which is about double the US population. If we, this aligns, this growth rate aligns with your general plan 2025. Had three scenarios in there with regards to growth. It kind of aligns with the moderate growth rate scenario. Takeaway, you're approximately 50,000 folks today. And assuming that 1.7% annual growth rate continues, over the next 15 years, your population will close to double over that period of time. As far as your age segmentation goes, this is important to understand because obviously people recreate differently based on age as one of the key primary factors. It's important to recognize you are relatively balanced when it comes to your population. Yes, you are growing in terms of age, but that age segmentation, 55 and older, is going to be about 36% in about 15 years. It's not Scottsdale where you could project 50% or more, or even Prescott for that matter. So it's important to recognize you are going to have needs to address at all of the different major age segments. You know, kids in school, young adults, middle age, as well as seniors.
I'm sorry, can you go back to that first slide with the population?
Absolutely.
And I'm definitely not a math guy, but so from 2019, so in five years, you would project us at 70,000 people?
That's at a 1.7% growth rate, correct?
No. I don't think, that would put us at 1.7% every year?
So it's almost 2% every year?
Yep. For purposes of planning, we went through this yesterday, and the numbers are moderate to aggressive.
Correct.
Better to plan for bigger, and if that doesn't happen, you can always scale back.
Just trying to do rough math, 2% of 50,000 is 1,000 people.
Yeah, it compounds.
Do you just compound up to 20,000 people?
Yeah, it compounds. But we can...
I'll take your word for it, but it just doesn't seem, it just seems a little rough there that we think in five years, we're going to jump 20,000 people in five years.
More than happy to kind of do, run the math again.
No, 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 no. I believe you, sir. I'm just trying to see how we're going to handle 5,000 people a year coming into Prescott Valley. It's a lot.
It is. And I think it's why one of the key factors that we need to get right in particular over the next month or so is the population growth. Because that impacts the amount of park acreage and all the amenities associated with that as you project out 15 years. Okay. So we, as I mentioned, we did focus group stakeholder information. And we, these are kind of some of the key themes that came out of this in the spring as well as late summer. You have strong advocacy and appreciation for the system. That came out very loud and clear. People appreciate your Parks and Recreation system. There is a concern, obviously, to keep up with growth so that parks don't end up getting overused. Indoor recreation spaces needed. Of course, you're a community, just like most every other community across the country that values trail systems, whether that be paved or unpaved. Community special events is a cornerstone of your community and your Parks and Recreation programs and services. Continued awareness of the offerings is desired. And I think this is just simply a matter of getting out in front and figuring out strategies to keep people engaged over time. And then, of course, if your system's going to grow, you have to have the financial strategies to maintain that growing system. We also have collected input on the project website. Without boring you with a bunch of words, we kind of put together a little art word cloud just to kind of give you a sense of the different, kind of the, obviously, the larger words are the ones that were repeated the most. My favorite is the one in the trunk of the tree that refers to bringing the cattle back. But for the most part, it's interesting that a lot of the things that we heard face-to-face were many of the same things that we heard via the community website. So the statistically valid survey. Part of why we had a long pause is we did not want to do this over the summer months. We wanted life to kind of return back to normal, kids back to school, so that we could do this effectively and efficiently. We were charged with trying to get 375 total surveys that were geographically and demographically representative of your community. We received 402 within about a month to six-week period. This means that simply you did the survey 100 times, you would get the same results 95 out of 100 times with that margin of error of about 4.9%. So this gives you a sense of where all of the surveys were returned from. And it speaks to the simple fact that we, for the most part, did a great job in terms of being able to be representative of where your community lives. Even the dots up in the far northeast, even the dots down in the far southeast portions of your community. And in looking at the full report, the demographic information reported back based on the respondents of the households that took these, they match up with your census information. So we've broken this up into chunks. The first is park and facility visitation and condition. So we asked people which parks they visited over the last 12 months. And of course, the larger parks are the ones that the majority of the community would visit. The pocket parks are the smaller, less-than-two-acre parks. And of course, those are not designed to carry a lot of visitation. Those are the ones that you would see at the bottom. The big takeaway from this is that 88% of your residents visited parks over the last 12 months. The national average is 76%. So people are using your park and recreation system at a very, very high rate. As far as rating the condition of your park system, the dark blue is the rating each of these parks as excellent. The light blue is rating them as good. The orange is fair and the red is poor. Long story short, your overall park system was rated as in an excellent condition at 29%, which matches the national benchmark. So you have high utilization of your park system and it's being well-maintained. As far as the 12% of folks that haven't visited parks, I don't necessarily discount, I don't necessarily put a whole lot of credence into, I'm not aware of where park or trails are. Part and parcel, just because there are just some folks that are not going to visit parks and trails. One of the big takeaways from this, though, is about two-thirds down the list there, reasons people did not use parks. The do-not-feel-safe in parks and trails was only 4%. That's huge because that is about one-fifth of what we normally see across the country. This is a huge props to public safety and a huge props to parks maintenance and a huge props to you to continually reinvesting in the infrastructure. So that, I think, is what is probably the most significant takeaway from this piece of information. Your community members feel safe using your public spaces. Yes?
That top line where they're not aware of our parks and trails. We work hard on that. Do you have any suggestions how we can increase that number?
Well, here's my takeaway from that.
I mean, decrease.
Here's my takeaway from that. If your number of people visiting parks was 50%, meaning well below your national benchmark, then I would be concerned. But when your people visiting your park system is at 88%, which is 12% above the national benchmark, I don't necessarily think that you can get 100% of your community to use it. It's just saying that of the 12% of the folks that haven't used your park system, 12% of that 12% or 13% are just not aware. So that's a pretty small number.
One of the reasons I ask you the question is because on the infamous Facebook, people say there's nothing for youth to do here. And I suspect that percentage there on that top is that group.
Well, I think...
They're not accepting what's right under their nose.
Hold those thoughts and I will hopefully help to address some of those as we go forward. So when we talk about program participation and quality, the national benchmark participating in programs and services is 33%. You're at 41%. So you not only have people using your parks, but you're also using your programs and services at a higher rate. And much of this, I think, can be attributed to the strong special event program that you have. However, we do have a little bit of work to do related to the quality of programs. So about 51% are rating the quality of your programs as excellent or good, which means another 48 or 49% are rating them as fair and poor. This can be looked at upon a couple of three different ways. One, people can rate quality of programs based on are you offering the things that they want you to offer? Two, do you have the best-practice spaces in which to offer these programs? Would say your park system, yes. Indoor spaces, probably not so much. And so I think that there's, this can be taken with, yes, we are working with staff to do a program assessment and understand and improve the quality of the programs that are being offered. But I think that there are also potentially strategic recommendations about improving your park and recreation system as a whole that will help to improve these numbers. As far as the reasons people are not participating, too busy, not interested, is 50%. That's higher than the national average, which very much speaks to the fact that may not necessarily be offering programs that folks are not interested in. But the second highest one is that they're just not aware of them. That is in line with the national benchmark of 35%. But hold that thought. So here is how people learn about Parks and Recreation services and programs in your community. Number one, the water bill insert. Number two, friends and neighbors. Number three, newspaper, including online. Four, Facebook. Five, town website. Six, radio. It's important to understand how they're learning. The next question is, how would they prefer to learn? They would prefer to learn exactly, almost exactly, how they're learning. It's the first time I've ever seen this happen.
Wow.
Usually, it's a lot of moving parts that says you're marketing a communication plan and program needs to adjust. The friends and neighbors component, I think, is always going to be high. The challenge with the friends and neighbors and relying on them is just simply, we've all played the telephone game, the message gets lost in translation, and people always have a tendency to talk about their past experiences as opposed to what's coming up. So you are doing a great job. Over the next five years, there's not a change that you should make with regards to your marketing in terms of how you get the word out about Parks and Recreation. Five, 10 years from now, this might need to change just depending upon how people receive and pay their water bill. And understanding that that potential changes on the horizon. So from a recreation program and activity needs, so this is all about how people use your system. This next section is how people want you to provide services. What's most important to your community? Number one was community special events. Not surprising. But number two was fitness and wellness programs. Number three, open swim. Number four, senior programs and services. Number five, again, more swimming. Number six, target shooting. Number seven, art classes. It's what people have found to be most important. Your rating for community special events is about 50% higher in terms of importance than we see from a national benchmark perspective. The next thing, though, is, are you meeting their needs? So we asked people, are your needs being met? And when we look at the unmet needs, which is very, very critical, it's really important to recognize that almost the exact same highest unmet needs are what people also find most important. Community special events, swimming, adult fitness and wellness programs, target shooting, and art classes, adult learning programs. So there's a lot of synergy between what people find to be most important and what they want you to do more of. When we look at art and culture, we looked at need and importance. We didn't measure unmet need. But you can see that three of the top five are very much in line with recreation programs and services. Community festivals, programs in parks, after-school programs. Those are things that have a lot of synergy with recreation. And that's good because that creates an efficient, effective delivery of services. Same thing with regards to the things that are most important. So a lot of synergy between recreation programs and services and art and culture and entertainment programs and services. We asked folks what they wanted to see out of special events. Things at the civic center. They wanted to see cultural festivals and food and beverage. Those are your top three. As far as what they would like to see at the Toyota Findlay Center or Findley Toyota Center, again, entertainment, cultural events. And then it drops down, those are your top two, and then it drops down to home business fairs. So again, you have synergy between recreation, art and culture, and then the type of events to be held in your community, whether they be held in your parks and facilities or whether they be held at the Toyota Center. As far as facility and amenity needs, so the big here is, is the community aligning the spaces with the experiences? So do they think that they need the same spaces that are necessary to support the experiences that they want and your community nailed it? They want indoor pools. They want trails that support fitness and health programming. They want shooting ranges. They want an indoor recreation center. And in a growing community, people definitely want open space and conservation. This is, even if you're surrounded by open space, which you are, people still want open space and conservation because they want to protect their view sheds from their front yards and/or their backyards. As far as unmet needs, exact same synergy that we saw in the programs and services. So what people find important, they want you to provide more of in terms of not just programs and services, but also your parks and facilities and amenities that support the experiences that they want. As far as public support goes, we asked them several statements related to the level of agreement that they have with the benefits that Parks and Recreation can provide to them. Your high, we asked them strongly agree, agree, neutral, you know, strongly kind of disagree, or disagree and strongly disagree. Your very, very, very top one, improved quality of life. 87% of your community either strongly are agreed or and/or agreed with that statement. The very, very, very bottom one, improve my mental health and reduce stress. 62% of the community either strongly agreed or agreed. My takeaway, Parks and Recreation is a foundational community value in your community. The numbers when we typically see ask these statements across the country, when we get to the bottom, they're strongly in agree and agree at 30% or 40% or maybe 50%. But you have some really, really strong advocacy for Parks and Recreation in your community with regards to alignment. and with regards to alignment. So in terms of what people are willing to fund, so you ask them their wishes and dreams and then you ask people what they're willing to fund. The number one thing was develop an indoor facility. Number two was obviously preserve, purchase, open space, conservation land. Four, develop new walking trails. Five, take care of kind of what you already have. And interestingly enough, improve restroom facilities is, I know, a hot topic for you all. It's also a high need for the community as well. So you're on top of it. As far as community needs go, we take all of the information and basically rank it high, medium, and low. Here's your highest programs and services. Community special events, fitness, wellness, more swim, senior programs, more swim, target shooting. Those are your top five. When we get to the middle, it becomes more about outdoor recreation kind of programs, special needs, and so on and so forth. The things on the low priority, it doesn't mean that you don't do them, it just means that you're doing a good job of meeting their needs. Those programs will obviously have to expand and the spaces to support those programs will have to expand as your population increases. But if you were to say if you're going to expand your parks and recreation system from a program and service perspective, you expand it in the direction of the highest priority. Art and culture, same thing, a lot of synergy with the, the recreation components. And then when we look at park facility amenity needs, again, these are the highest priority and they very much support the experiences that people want out of your system that you're not currently providing. So all of the emerging issues, very similar to what we heard in the focus groups. The, the two that I would really add is indoor recreation spaces needed. I think you need to continue to take care of what you already have. And when I say continue, I think that's an important statement because a lot of times I go around the country and saying, you have to start taking care of what you already have. You all are doing a great job, so it's continually reinvesting in your system and continue to build advocacy. You don't want to rest on your laurels and continuing to create awareness and advocacy about what you're doing is critically important to build off of that strong benefit statements that we showed. So our next steps, program and service assessment, park and maintenance assessment. This speaks to that total cost of ownership concept that we spoke to when we introduced the project and making sure that as your system grows, if you invest in it capitally, unless it's on somebody else such as a YMCA and they're going to operate, maintain it. But if you expand your park system that's publicly accessible, that you all will own and manage and maintain, you have to keep up with the operations and maintenance of it. But we will take all of this information then and start to translate it into what does your system need to meet your community's needs in terms of park acreage, in terms of amenities and facilities? And how do you create synergy between the elements that are incorporated into your master plan communities and the elements that get incorporated into your public park and recreation system? We'll map all of this level of service and we have already kind of done a workshop that identifies a park-by-park improvement scenario for each. So basically we've developed a mini park improvement plan for each of your parks. Most of them are going to be about lifecycle replacement items over the next 10 years. Replacing restrooms, replacing playgrounds, replacing foot bridges, and so on and so forth. Questions, concerns, comments, suggestions? A lot of information, I recognize.
I, I would have thought pickleball was a little bit higher than it was shown.
Well, the, the thing that we typically see when you start getting into a lot of the sports, when you measure it against the community as a whole, the sports have small age segmentation appeal as well as skill appeal. So that's what I mean. It's not that it's not needed or you're going to stop doing it. It's just that, for example, you're not going to put athletic fields and pickleball courts in every park. You're going to do that strategically.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And can we get a copy of that emailed to us?
Yes, absolutely. And what my final statement was going to be is that this presentation is going to be posted on the master plan website as of 7 o'clock tonight.
Oh, awesome.
So you will have access to that, but the public as a whole will have access to it as well.
Thank you.
I don't really have a question, but those who had to listen to me at our budget meeting know I feel very validated now.
Great.
Particularly where, what the community wants from arts and culture because we already were doing so fabulous with our parks. This was, this was more than interesting. This is deep food for thought for planning and more planning.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you. All right. We will see you all in a couple of months and we'll start taking this information and really starting to translate it into maybe some scary things when it comes to the expansion of your parks and recreation system based on the growth of your community. All right. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are you going to tell me that we're going to have 70,000 people in five years?
Maybe not. Maybe close to it. Mayor and council, prior to the recession, years 2000 through 2005, the town conducted a, I think the word is a biennial survey. Every two years, we conducted a survey. We contracted with a group called West Group Research. 2007, we participated in a national citizen survey through ICMA, which was a more generic survey, which asked the same questions in every, many other cities across the nation. So it allowed us to compare how we were doing compared to other cities. Now, the recession hit and money for those surveys went away. There's been several issues that have come up over the past few years that would be interesting to judge the public's opinion and whether or not we're, we're meeting those needs. In your packet, staff discussed, you know, some potential questions that we could ask the public. How are we doing in our levels of service for the streets, police, water sewer, library parks, communications? You know, what primary source do people use to get their information about the town? We heard from our, our master, our parks master plan survey that a lot of people are getting their information about the town from the town news. Then, you know, newspaper, I believe was next. Facebook was, was third, I believe. So how are people getting their information from the town? There's lots of amenities, capital projects that we could ask questions about. One that's come up recently is transit. Would people be interested in funding a transit system through a property tax? We can ask the same thing about Algafralia Park. Algafralia Park has been on our books for 20 years and it could be another 20 years unless we find a dedicated revenue source for that. You know, there's also a sidewalk question. Sidewalks come up frequently. I know you guys hear a lot about that. The town is, the town is continuing to put in sidewalks on major arterials as we do street improvements. We haven't been able to do that in residential neighborhoods. Would people be willing to assess themselves a property tax on their homes to put sidewalks in their neighborhoods? Or, you know, we've had some large storm events the past few years. Would people be interested in assessing themselves a fee on their water and sewer bill to, to start a, a drainage district? So these are all things that, that we could ask the public if they had an interest in funding. There's some miscellaneous questions that staff discussed and proposed. Are you in favor of securing a stable and, excuse me, are you in favor of the town securing stable and, and, stable and sustainable water supplies? Sorry, not talking well. Should the town continue to build up its rainy day fund or should we increase spending to add additional amenities or a higher level of service? This is a question that comes up routinely. Do you prefer the name Town of Prescott Valley or City of Prescott Valley? These are just questions that, you know, staff has proposed. This is not a concrete list. That's why we're coming for you today to see if you're interested in doing this kind of a, a survey. Interestingly, the last time we, we used West Group Research, these were some of the questions that we asked and got answers to in 2005. What one source do you rely upon for information about the Town of Prescott Valley? Daily Courier was number one. The Tribune was, was second. And the town news website and word of mouth and radio was last. Bill Monroe, you've got your work cut out for you? Maybe he left. He was here earlier. That's changed. Obviously, that's changed since 2005. We know that our town news is doing well. Social media is, is very active for the town. Water resource management, we asked a question in '05. Do you feel that the town is doing enough to develop water resources for the community? 46 percent said yes. 27 percent said no. 27 percent didn't have an opinion. Public transportation, we asked the question. Do you favor or oppose the town increasing sales tax to subsidize public transit, a bus company? 37 percent favored that. 55 percent opposed and 8 percent didn't have an opinion. Name designation, we asked that question in '05 as well. Do you prefer Town of Prescott Valley or City? 51 percent, you know, were in favor of keeping it the town. 24 percent were in favor of city and another 24 percent had no preference. So those are just some of the types of information that we can get when we do this survey. So we're going to survey you now. Do you want to move forward with the survey? We got a quote from the same company that we used last decade for a three-minute survey. It would cost us just under $10,000. That would probably get us maybe three, four questions. We up that to six, a six-minute survey that ups the cost to just under 13,000. A lot of our costs is upfront and buying the data, the cell phone numbers from Verizon, Sprint, those companies. So we have an accurate data set. We can strictly ask these questions. We can ask, you know, a couple of questions and then ask demographics. So it's really up in the air what you guys want to do or if you want to do it at all. So with that, I'm happy to hear your discussion questions.
I'll just, I'll start. Not a fan of the surveys. It's tough, especially it's going to be on, on a, on the phone. I mean, I know when people call me, I give them about 10 seconds of my time and if I do hang on a little bit longer, it's frustrated and I'm pressing a bunch of zeros or ones just to get off the phone. And the questions, I don't, I mean, we'd have to definitely dial a question if we were to go with it. I don't, I don't believe in asking the, like for transit, we've talked about this in regards to, hey, do you have a tax? Would you accept a tax on your home? Why not? If there was a funding source available, would you support transit? And then the funding source, or if there was an additional funding source available, would you support transit? Or would you support sidewalks? Or would you? And I think that would leave it, it's a steering question is what it is. It's just basically, hey, do you want to put a stick in your eye, in your left eye or your right eye?
Yes.
No, and that's, no one wants it, you know? You don't want to do that, in my opinion. I'm not a survey expert, nor am I a mathematician, but that's my thought on.
I'd be curious to know how many of our citizens want us to spend 10,000 of their dollars doing any kind of survey.
Well, we could do a survey about that.
Yeah, I'll bet there is. And I, I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm, I'm also not a fan of it. I, I don't know. I'm just, just.
I, I, in the past, I've always enjoyed surveys, but I'm not willing to spend that money for one. There's too many valuable places we could put that fund for me to want to do that.
If most of our citizens are responding to the water bill, which we found out in the last presentation, let's put a written survey in the water bill and those people that want to respond can notify us by social media of the things that are most important to them. Something like that that's not going to cost us any money. And, and those people that, the 62 percent or whatever it was that, that show an interest, let them show an interest. I just, I really have a hard time spending any money.
And we can certainly do that. That removes the validity part of it because-
Yeah, of course.
-only those people that are interested are going to respond to it.
And that's exactly, you're absolutely right. Those that feel strongly about something are going to be the ones that respond.
I, I think we have a captive audience to our CV. It's our citizens academy. Yes, it's a small percentage, but it's a representative, so let's ask-
We have a good alumni group. We can-
Yes.
Ask that question.
Let the alumni group, and we can handle it ourselves and not spend all that money.
Or maybe get Heidi going on, I mean, she, honestly, we have 17,000 followers on our Facebook page. It's a large segment. And if we can work a, a once-a-week survey, you know, I've done them on my page. If we do once a week, maybe be a little bit more elaborate on our questions, maybe, who knows, in three months, you'd have a, a good core group of questions. Again, it's Facebook. Not everyone does Facebook, but I think we comboed and did a multi-pronged approach to it with Councilman Anderson suggested and Vice Minister and I in regards to pooling the, the alumni, the utility bill people, and then Facebook population. I'd put that up against any survey any day.
It bothers me how many times a property tax was mentioned in this survey. I understand the reason behind it. I voted to do it before and I was really unhappy afterwards. It's like we're holding a club over their head, just like we're doing with transportation now. And if you really want it, we gotta have more tax. That's what that survey sounds to me like. And I think that's very negative pressure. Now, I think it's normal for surveys in other communities, but I don't like negative pressure put on our populace.
If I could comment on that, Councilwoman and I, as you well know, our pie is cut in terms of revenue. Okay? If we're going to add new services, we need to expand the pie. Otherwise, we take away from existing sources. It's, it's that simple. And so, yes, does it feel like a club? Certainly does, but you know, one, one thing that, that when we do surveys, just like we did for Parks and Rec, going ahead and asking what you want without attaching the ramification, the financial ramification, to me is a very hollow survey. It's like asking Santa Claus for the world, but not taking into account the next step. You got to pay for it. And so I think that's really important for people to understand.
I think I know that very well, but I think we can phrase it in just a little less negative way. That's like a threat. You either vote for a property tax or you don't get this. And I just have a problem with that. Is it reality? Yes, it's reality, but that's not the kind of community emotional state I want to create here in this community.
If we're, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Go ahead.
If we're going to use the pie analogy, I believe, yes, there is the pie that we all cut up. But then if we're going to listen to the citizens and find out the need there, then it's our duty as elected to figure out a way to make the pie differently, different recipe. Whether you make the pie bigger, which there are ways, or we do something else with the ingredients in the pie and make room for something else that's needed. That is a decision that council makes, I think, at a point. And the citizens rely on us to provide that opportunity for them. We shouldn't just say, hey, the only way you get this is if you do this. That's it. And I don't think that's, I don't think that's right.
Well, I'm, I'm curious myself. There are, and I know this is, this is kind of jumping off, off the bridge, I think, but-
We'll hold hands.
In, in order to raise impact fees, there has to be something attached to going back and readdressing impact fees. Is that correct?
Correct. We'd have to-
So perhaps some of these issues we're looking at could be reason for addressing development impact fees. Would that work? I mean, maybe that's another direction.
Is that an option? That, that certainly is exactly what I'm talking about when you're talking about expanding the pie.
Right.
And so, for example, the conversation that we had with Parks and Rec, with Mike, the person that gave you that presentation, talking about the expansion of the park system to keep up with growth, quite frankly, it's going to be simple because if you will recall, we apply a standard- we apply a standard of 6.8 acres per 1,000 citizens to every development. That is the most aggressive standard in the state of Arizona, okay? And so, as a result, take a look at Granville, and you're getting a new park built that is essentially being paid for with development impact fees, land being part of the obligation for the developer of Granville. So, we're gonna be able to stay abreast of new park sites because of our standard, because of their absolute necessity to dedicate the land and participate in building the parks. In addition to that, we have a very large project that's been on the drawing board for years, that's Awafria Park. What we can do with that 6.8 acres per 1,000 standard is take a portion of that and apply that to the regional park that benefits that developer, and bingo, over time, we end up building a multimillion-dollar regional park using that. Now, having said that, in addressing development impact fees, if we find that we need some additional fees based on the impact of new growth, certainly going ahead and looking at an adjustment of those fees, not only in Parks and Rec, but in public safety, in streets, in all of those. One thing that we're very careful of, though, is making sure that we stay competitive in the market. There are some communities that their total impact fees, this is in the state of Arizona, exceed over $20,000 per house.
And I, I understand, and I'm not saying that, I'm not suggesting that we raise them. What I'm suggesting is that it's another area we can look at.
Exactly.
And that's all, all any of us are saying, is that there, there are directions we can look.
Yes.
And we ought to be doing those before we look to adding additional revenue sources. That's, I, in my opinion, that's what we ought to be looking at. Because we don't have the authority to add additional revenue sources to begin with, so that's, that's gonna take...
Right.
...a vote by the citizens in most cases.
That is correct, because of the, the change in state law.
Right.
To increase sales tax, to, to implement property tax, those will require a vote of our citizenry, as it should.
And we should be willing to support that. I'm gonna bring this up, although it isn't popular, I think Rick might be the only one that'll remember what I'm talking about. But just when we hit the downturn of the economy, that then council was getting ready to vote to help arts and culture by having all development 1%, we go for arts and culture within their own project, and I think we need to revisit that. Oral Valley is a perfect example. That is how they did that, and it's fabulous, and the citizens are very happy with it. Either that, or we need to create some kind of incentive, because if we want to attract the quality of jobs and businesses, especially in high-tech, we have to up that part of our community. And we have other ways to do it than taxing our citizens.
I don't know how much that's helped you, Ryan. We kind of went off the rails there.
So, I'm hearing you want to move forward with the survey and pay the $10,000, is that right?
Councilwoman Hunt.
When's the last time we did a Nexus study for the DIF?
It's been approximately seven years, I believe, since our last complete DIF study.
The last time we looked at the DIF fees?
Correct.
Yeah, so I agree with Rick that we should get that done fairly soon.
We've, we've done a couple of adjustments the past two years in a row.
On cost of living.
Essentially, just juggling capital projects, keeping the fee the same, but yeah, it's been about seven years since we reevaluated.
And I really support that a portion of that goes to a regional park, I'm surprised that we don't, and arts and culture as well, I'm surprised that a portion of that doesn't go now. I mean, I understand why that we needed to build parks, but again, I think we're at a point now where we can, we really, really, really need to do that.
And, and a portion, in the Parks DIF, I can speak to that, Awafria Park is in there, it's just not accumulating fast enough to be able to do the park.
But I agree, arts and culture should be there, too. And then, with regard to the study, I, I think it's premature to do any kind of a survey without having some sort of consultant onboard to help us with our branding and all of that stuff that we talked about on Friday, because that type of person can also help us with survey questions. You know, we got great information at the last present, from the last presenter on Parks and Rec, really good information that we need, that we can use to help us formulate this kind of stuff, but I don't support any survey until we take that step first.
We have, we have another option as well, we can speak with Yevby College, I know they have students that do surveys as projects.
Without spending a lot of money.
So, that's, that's another option that we can look at as well for some of these issues, if you're interested.
I, I have a question I want to ask everybody in this room, 'cause other than our wonderful new police chief, most of us have been here a long time. We did do branding. Does anybody remember what we branded ourselves? Where Opportunity Lives?
Very good branding, though.
And it fell flat, so, saying.
I'm glad I wasn't involved in that choice.
Obviously didn't do that very well, now, did we?
I know, I had a fit at the time.
Okay, I think we've gotten in the right direction, so.
Appreciate it.
We needed to go afar, thank you for tolerating me.
Next up...
Assuming you did.
Contract for, for professional services, Mountain Valley Recharge Well, construction and permitting, Mr. Munderlow.
We're gonna be good, John, you've had a really long day.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, want to talk tonight about a additional piece of infrastructure to recharge Eflon. Start with some statistics after a long day, it's just what the doctor ordered, right? Just dial down to the last two bullets there. In the past three years, we've, on average, received about 1,600, 1,700 acre-feet per year of credited recharge, but we discharge out to the channel, out to the environment, about 800 acre-feet a year that is not credited to the town. So, it's a valuable resource that we don't get to capture and keep in our portfolio. It is dedicated to the aquifer, so it's not lost water or anything, so it's, it's quite a gift to the active management area for those who are at this afternoon's meeting. But we want to capture that, we want to get that credited to our accounts, it's important for our future, future growth, without impacting our aquifer. So, what we do, just, and I know you all are familiar with this, is that we, we take advantage of vacant space that exists above the water table in the aquifer. In this cutaway diagram, you can see the brown vacant space above the water table, it's called the Vado Zone. We're required to obtain a variety of permits to use the state's Vado Zone to store water. What we do right now, we have two facilities that are recharge facilities, where we start water on the surface, similar to this diagram. We use basins, or we use berms in the Awafria Channel, and it soaks through the relatively tight clay material that we have permeated throughout Prescott Valley, but it eventually reaches the aquifer and becomes a resource that we can use. It's stored, it's, it's preserved from evaporation and that sort of thing. What we're planning to do is actually turn that around and use a direct injection well, so this would be a well that would be drilled into the aquifer, down deep where we have coarser materials, so that water would, would go down into the deep coarser materials and then, you know, join with the rest of the aquifer and store water in that vacant space there. So, that's the idea behind an injection well. As I said, our current facilities are basically at capacity, not that the facility themselves are unable to infiltrate water into the aquifer, it's that the aquifer is full, we've been very successful. So, at our North Plains facility, we're maybe 15 feet to water levels, at our in-channel facility, maybe 30 feet to water levels, we just don't have a lot, a lot more room there. Part of why we're not getting credit for the 800 acre-feet that we could get. So, to investigate how we could do this, our consultants, Southwest Groundwater, now they're called Matrix New World Engineering, so I'll just refer to them as Matrix from now on, they proposed that Mountain Valley Park could be a good site, we already have property there, we already have a reclaimed water line that goes through the site, so we have a capacity to run our Eflon, our reclaimed water to that location, but we didn't have much deep data, much data about the deeper aquifer materials down there, so they said, let's go build an exploration well. This was a little project you approved last spring. So, they drilled a relatively small diameter, six-inch well, pulled out a lot of material, as you can see in this diagram, they catalog it, they discover what the material's like. Fortunately, we found a lot of relatively coarse material down there, down deeper than we drilled before, so that's good news, it's somewhat cemented. They did basically a stepped infiltration test, so they took water from one of the hydrants, and if you recall, for a little while this summer, going across Lake Shore Drive, people had, kind of had to slow down, we had a, had a water line going across the road for a while, and we ran water into this well at different rates to see how it was, how it took water. So, with a relatively small well, we were, we found we had good success. I think that was 160 gallons per minute or so in that relatively small diameter well. On this diagram, this is where we had the exploration well, kind of across, a little bit northwest of the Trinity Lutheran Church, and so, given the information that we were able to gather on that test well, the recommendation from the consultant is, let's go forward. Let's build an injection well, a full-scale one, it'll be a bigger diameter, 12-inch well, it'll have a number of additional tricks to it that are required of injection wells, and I'll talk about that in a second. So, it'd be on town property, the exploration well was on town property, it's on developed property adjacent to the Mountain Valley Park right there. We'd move the injection well a little bit to the south, and we'd be able to convert our investment in that exploration well into one of the required monitoring wells. So, as we move forward and obtain permits required by the state, we have to have monitoring wells associated with our activities, and so we'd be able to use that as a monitor well. So, moving forward, this contract that I, if everybody's agreeable, we'll bring back next week for approval with Matrix for doing the well design, the construction oversight, and primarily, a lot of the costs will be put into the permitting aspect of it, and we have to obtain a recharge permit, we'll call it, from the Department of Water Resources, and we'll have to modify what's called an aquifer protection permit with the Department of Environmental Quality. Those are highly technical submittals, they require groundwater modeling, water quality modeling, and that sort of thing. Ultimately, we think that it'll result in us being able to build that larger injection well. They're suggesting that it'd be at a rate of about 400 gallons per minute is what we could get in, which would be around 600 acre-feet a year, so it'd be a big chunk towards obtaining some use of that 800 acre-feet that we're not getting credited now. So, that's kind of basically it. First step is a contract with the consultants to do the work, and then we'll come back with a construction contract at some point in time to build the well.
Councilman?
John, so the million, 50,000 that we have in the budget, is that gonna cover the construction of the well?
It probably is close, we'll have to see. The injection wells have a few tricks that regular production wells don't have, they need higher-quality casing so that we don't get fouling at the point of contact with the aquifer, and we need some tricky valving and pumping so that we can backflow the well. One of the tricks with injection wells is that you need to put them below the water table so that you can backflush them, so that you can clean them, because the water we're putting in is high-quality, but it does contain some particles. It will, over time, lug things up and reduce its injection level, so you have to backflush it, we'll pump it back, we'll put the water probably back into the sewer line, and it'll go back to the plant to be treated, so we won't lose it. So, there's a number of tricks that are a little bit fancier than a normal well. I, I hope we have enough money.
I think this is a great project, I support it. It's great because we're, you know, we're discharging now into, into the...
Awafria.
Awafria. But we have times where we can't do it, or where it doesn't count, during monsoons and what have you, or when the dams are not there. This would be 100%, right? We can count it all the time.
Yeah, like, again, there will be some backflow requirements, backflushing requirements. Experience our consultants have with other cities where they do this type of work is that you'd be backflushing, say, on the order of 20 minutes every eight hours, so some of that water would be coming back out. But for the most part, yes, and it gives us a lot of operational flexibility for times when weather doesn't cooperate. There are times that, as Councilwoman Hunt inferred, there are times we cannot use our North Plains facility because of flows in the Awafria River, same with the in-channel facility, and it influences certain triggers with our permits, and so we don't get credits.
John, why, why didn't we do this earlier? Why wasn't this done years ago? Was it just now's a good time, or?
Well, the surface, the surface systems that we have are less expensive per acre-foot to use, and they're very effective until, you know, we essentially filled up the aquifer.
Gotcha.
These are more expensive per unit, really, to use, they don't require as much land, and we think over time they won't require as much maintenance. So, we, we actually did start with what are called Vado Zone injection wells at Mountain Valley Park in about 1999.
Okay.
And so, it was kind of a pilot project, they, the problem with them is that they were not connected to the water table, so you weren't able to backflush them and clean them. So, after a period of time, they plugged up and became ineffective. So, with that experience and the broader state knowledge and comfort with kind of the surface application methods, that's kind of the standard throughout the state. Injection wells have come a long way in the past 20 years since we started, and, and the, you know, the depth of knowledge and experience in how to construct them, I think we're in a, in a much safer zone now than we were before.
Great, thank you.
I have one quick question, too. How many injection wells will we need?
Well, we'll start with this first one, but when we go through the permitting process, we're suggesting that we'd go ahead and add at least probably two more sites to our permit. So, when we add another one, we'd only have to go through the engineering phase and construction phase, we wouldn't have to go back to Department of Water Resources, Department of Environmental Quality, and do it all over again. I think at the Mountain Valley Park site, you know, giving the spacing requirements, probably a quarter mile or so apart, we could probably get two more in on town property in Mountain Valley Park site. And of course, the surface disruption is only probably, you know, a small building, 12 by 12 or something like that, so it really won't interfere with any other activities.
Thanks, Mayor.
I wanted to say, that was a really good question you asked, and as John was explaining it, did you realize we suffered from success? Our, our projects were so successful that we suffered from that. But the other thing is, the technology is so different now, just want to point that out. Now, everybody look at your screen, and look where the major costs are. Almost 69,000 for permit applications, notice that's plural? Isn't that just, give you chills up and down your spine? I mean, it's ludicrous. Now, I have a real question, John. Because our experiences, we have such a long time in other arenas getting our permits, will we suffer any of that with this process, or is this, these agencies better organized and it won't take as long?
It's, Vice Mayor Nye, it's better. There, there are more constraints on... There are more constraints on their ability to throw weird things at you. That being said, on our past recharge permits, we've had some weird things thrown at us. One particular thing was a USGS topo had a historic grave marked on it, and one of the permitting agencies thought it said gravel.
Okay.
Grave with a plus mark.
That's why I'm asking the question.
And that cost us a lot of money in additional, because they started asking questions about it. They want to make sure that we don't create water level rises for gravel companies. So little things happen, you can't really know what's going to happen.
So your answer is a question mark.
And that's part of why we have a contract allowance of $20,000 in here. That's for the weird stuff that comes out of agencies.
Sounds good.
Thank you, John.
Counselman?
Who else is doing this in Arizona?
Our consultants have worked extensively with the city of Chandler, so they have a pretty good array of injection wells in Chandler.
Okay.
Yeah. So a lot of cities in the valley do this.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Quite common.
I had one other question, and I always think of planned obsolescence, but on the stainless steel casing at the bottom, where it also has the wire wrap well screen, is that a replaceable item over time? I know when you're talking about backwashing because of the buildup.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, there will be a service life to this. You know, you'd probably think in terms of 20 years. The wire wrap casing is an innovative feature here, rather than having gravel pack. And the point of it is that within the gravel pack that would be outside of a normal well casing, when you backflush, you just cannot create enough high-velocity flow to pull all of that material back out. This wire wrap casing has the strength to withstand being put right up against the contact level of the hole, so we won't have a gravel pack in this. So the contact area and the area that you need to clean is right there at the casing. So it's a pretty neat, innovative feature, really.
Great.
We don't think about these things, really, but...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Final item? Mr. Davis?
Yavapai County, Town of Prescott Valley, roadway improvement projects.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I am here to talk to you about the SR-89A Turn Lane Project State. This may look familiar to Council because we've, I've come before you about this project before, come to you in the past to award design. It's actually three individual projects, bid as one concurrent project to get some economies of scale. So I think Council is well aware, we actually approved the intergovernment agreements for funding with Yavapai County this past summer, so we put those in place. So we had the design in place. Now, what I'm bringing to you now is the actual construction bid phase that we're going to do. Just to rehash the projects that's included, I do like to point out always that this, these projects came recommended out of a public study that was done out of the 2040 CYMPO, Century Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, the 2040 Plan, that was done five years ago. This study came out of project recommendations that took public input, in addition to the transportation consultant professional studying the data, so to speak, and making recommendations. So this study was final in March of 2018. One of the big takeaways, or I'd like to point out from the study, was that this recommended projects that shows not only short-term, somewhat inexpensive projects in the game of public works instruction. In addition, you can see they're all ranked there on the priority. You can see some of the larger projects. There are the large traffic interchanges on best proposed for Highway 89A. What I wanted to focus on is the particular highlighted ones are two of the projects that were picked out of this study that we partnered with ADOT, Yavapai County, and the Town to deliver these two projects, and it's actually number four and six. Do like to point out the number one project there, this passed about six months ago, Arizona Department of Transportation moved forward with some of the high-visibility-type signage for the signal out there at 89A and Robert Road. So every one of these has its particular focus and priority, and of course, associated funding level. So let's talk about the first one, the Viewpoint Drive northbound additional lane. This is the project sign we put up about three weeks ago to let the public know these particular improvements are coming their way. And I think Council has seen this particular exhibit in the past. Basically, what this particular project is, is the second lane that goes from the off-ramp on 89A to basically Promhorn Ranch Parkway. You can see they're noted in red. Important thing to note is, many years ago, when the bridge was put in and the widening of 89A, there was actually, the area underneath the bridge was planned for striped out because there wasn't any receiving lanes. And in the last 60 days, ADOT has actually marked out those white stripes, say, "Hey, we're ready for you." It's getting to the partnership. You know, I have a good relationship with my counterparts at ADOT. In addition, Yavapai County, we all plan these things. So been lots of things in the process, not only the design, but actually doing the physical work to obliterate that striping when the temperatures were good, so that they're fully anticipating this particular project. We've got this particular project planned in the contract to be done first. We're anticipating at this point, when things go well, the contractor will be done by January 1st, so this will be the first one. This project is a good one. We've talked in the past, because that afternoon commute, what this will do is add that second lane on the off-ramp, so you have two receiving lanes rather than the current one you have. Basically doubles the capacity. It's neat stuff to spend $80,000 on construction and get that much more capacity, to get rid of that afternoon commute and get that more capacity. We've talked about this in the past. The other project is the Glassford Hill Free Flow Right Turn. As, this is the project sign that's up. Do like to point out to Council, we've gotten a lot of visibility from our median sign we put up. We've talked about the development community is the one that put in the trees and the median curbing, but this sign is actually on the right side, and the landscape sign is right next to it, so we get that visibility from the public. And once again, pointing out those project partnerships up in the corner with everyone's logos, but this particular project, I think Council's seen this before. Do like to point out, the past August Town News, these particular projects were talked about, so we brought the, communicated to the public that it was in design, we're anticipating, sending out for bid, but here's a good indication of, you know, basically a 1,700-foot-long additional lane. And you can see that the ultimate condition, which you'll have to slow down at the curve, but you won't have to stop and turn, so this will add a lot of capacity. In addition, that third lane, that's always been planned for Glassford, the right-of-way's out there, this will add that additional third lane up to Tuscany from 89A. So part of building those capacity improvements in smaller increments. This project's around half a million dollars if you look at your packet of Council information. The third project that has been added was, Yavapai County came to us and said they actually overlaid the five miles of Coyote Springs Road, and we have about, I think, 500 feet within the town. So they came to us and said, "It sure would be nice that we've just gotten them to overlay if we had increased that capacity on Coyote Springs Road." So likewise, once again, intergovernmental agreement, and I think I failed to mention, basically a 50% funding split with the county on these particular projects, so half the money's coming from the county through the intergovernmental agreement. Here's a good indication of that little project there. As you can see, it's about a $250,000 improvement. We actually have three lanes up closer to Anlope Meadows Drive, and this project basically is the widening of that last little part before 89A, adds that additional turn lane and the safety improvements for the curve, in addition to moving the cattle guard up. And actually, the mailbox is a big part of this project. Not part of what we're bidding, but the residents are very interested, those are actually county residents, but we're cooperating with the county to upgrade with the U.S. Postal Service. We've got, as part of the design, those have all been incorporated concurrent with the project, not part of the town project, but all the mailbox will be new for, that's several hundred residents that use that. So here's a good example of this particular project. Do like to point out, Dave and Associates, Gordon Bowers does a great job with the design. Typically, he, you know, runs his design through town staff. Well, he had not only county guys, but also ADOT guys, so he's very patient to meld the different comments from the different agencies into one and come up with an acceptable design. So as usual, Gordon does a very good job, and Dave and Associates, on getting everyone concurrence that, yes, we're going to go build this, and we all have our little say-so into the particular final product. We did take bids, you can see in your Council action, got good contractor participation, got seven contractor bids. The low bidder is CLM Earth Movers, a local construction company. And as you can see, it's within the budget, and so there's different funding sources. We talked earlier in some of the Council, you know, items tonight about development impact fees. I think it's important to note that these are very much projects that are funded through development impact fees. So if you look at the particular finance table, the first two projects being the Viewpoint Turn Lane, development impact fee funded, half of it from development impact fees in the town, half of it being county funds. Likewise, the half a million dollars for Glassford Hill Free Flow Right Development Impact Fees. So Ryan does a great job. We've talked, it's been seven years since we initiated looking at the fees, but every couple of years, Ryan incorporates, do the engineering study I started with, we're able to put updates into there and do an amendment to the development impact fee, so that we're right up to date with what's more current. What's always important, too, is studies do change every couple of years. That's a current study, we put it in development impact fees, so they work hand in glove. Not only do you get the report with public input of what's needed through a transportation professional, but you also get the funding identified, and that's in the particular report. I didn't bring that tonight, but development impact fees. And Coyote Springs, do like to point out, that's her funding because it's not particularly development impact fees, but keep in mind, these are all roadways off 89A, going to add a lot of capacity out there, very much appreciated by the public from the input we've gotten. So good projects. And once again, I just want to close with the partnership we have with ADOT and the county. Good stuff to get together with my peers, getting to do a little fun with engineering, but also getting the funding that everyone's on the same page, and we all equally get the benefit. They are the particular funding source. We get to manage the project, but they are invited to participate with us, so they have a skin in the game, and we make sure that their electeds are made aware of where their constituents' funding is going. But each one of these benefits all of us equally, so kind of unique project, kind of fun to work on, to get the projects and funding partners together that everybody gets to cooperate and share equally in the benefit. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel?
I have some questions. So the signs are already up, right?
Correct.
And the reason why they say your tax dollars are at work is because the county's using HERF, in case we're asked?
That's been generic, you see on a lot of project signs, your tax dollars are working just that, it's...
Even though we're using DIF fees?
Could have put the DIF fees on there. This has just been standard language. Actually, we make it green to have a connotation of its dollars, I guess. So to answer your question, that's typically what we do, is your tax dollars are working, but we don't identify on these particular signs that it was development impact fees. I think your question may go to the sign that's adjacent to this one on Glassford, talked about the Granville community funded the median landscape improvements. Very different, not your tax dollars, the Granville community funded. I don't have a picture of that sign with me.
I think if we're using DIF fees, unless the county's majority was HERF or some other tax dollars, that we should say that we're using DIF fees, so people know that the new residents are paying for it.
We could do that...
You don't have to respond. That's just my comment. And then, secondly, I don't really support, and I'm just one vote, using the Florentine storm water improvement money. Is there another source that we could use? Because we kind of expressed that Florentine was a priority for us, so I don't really recommend moving that money.
We're not able to deliver Florentine this budget year, so to the point, Coyote Springs was not a budgeted item this year. This came after the fact, so that was the funding source of HERF funding needed to go to fund that particular project, because it wasn't identified as a development impact fee project. So that was the funding source in order to get the capacity, in order to fund the particular Coyote Springs.
I just had one... I have a quick question on 89A. When you exit at Granville, and it's going to be the right turn lane, is there going to be a curb or anything to keep the people from, because it's a two-way, it's two right turns at the same time coming off the freeway, correct? Two people can make a right-hand turn. There's an inner and an outer right-hand?
Right now, there is. Currently, there is.
Currently. Is that going to continue, or is it going to turn into only the right turn lane?
That would be a through lane on the...
On the middle lane?
On the middle lane, correct.
And that also still turn right?
And right, and there'd be one that turns right, too, correct.
Okay, and then what will keep the people from turning right when the first lane is exiting all the time? When the people turn right on the second lane, can they then merge into the right lane? Is there going to be a curbing or anything there to prevent that, or is it just straight away like it is now?
There's a median right there.
Like it is now, it'll provide that opportunity for you to, you know, without, you wouldn't want curbing there because that weaving motion, so keep in mind, the people that aren't going to go all the way up to Tuscany there will have to weave, and you have basically that 1,700 feet to weave into that through lane.
Sure.
So that is a trap lane, so to speak, that anything, as you see, let's call it to the north, there's no lane each, that's why you can do the free flow right. The consultant did point us out in that study they did is, what's important to note is, in the current 2045 Plan, is a consultant always reminds us that you're going to lose that capacity, you get that big left turn movement, there's nobody going particularly southbound. If there's a development north of 89A, that's going to take a lot of that capacity away. So those, that laneage will have to be added in the future, too. And that's all part of the evolution of what the ultimate configuration is. And what's important to note is, you know, ADOT has the foresight with our input that all these particular large interchanges do have that capacity put in it. You're not trying to add just one lane underneath the bridge, but the capacity is there for future, as we talked about with Viewpoint. Glassford is very similar.
Okay. Thank you.
Norm, I appreciate your time. It's just, I'll just say it again, that Florentine is a high priority, at least of mine, and I see us adding more roads and doing more things. They are certainly needed. I'm not saying they are not needed. But your piece of the pie, as we've discussed, in my opinion, needs to be bigger. And we, as Council, need to do what we can to make that piece bigger, because Florentine is in desperate need of your attention, so hopefully we can figure something out with that. And Vice Mayor makes a good point there in regards to the timeframe of what may be projected for Florentine. I know we talked at work, study, trying to just dial in where you're at for certain projects, whether it's sidewalks, Florentine, Navajo. Actually, I saw you north into Navajo today, checking on some of the road.
You know, I think it's important to note Florentine, when you do your preliminary design, that's what the engineer tells you. We originally scoped that, well, we're going to put in a drain pipe and an overlay. You get to looking at the subgrade, and then you get the utility folks say, you know, there's a big corridors that we want to put something in so we don't dig it up later. It really ballooned with good planning to a much larger project. That's what you find out when you scope it, whether it got funded or not, with competing with other priorities. So yes, it's something that we've had to back off and say, it's got a lot of investment in the individual utilities. It's going to be very similar to Sunset Lane.
No, and I totally recognize that, and in my opinion, and again, my opinion is this one of seven up here, is I put Florentine above the Viewpoint Extension, just me personally. I think that's more valuable to our community. It connects an older portion of our community and provides them a service that I think we need more than the Viewpoint Extension. But again, that's just my opinion. I don't need a response on that. I was just throwing it out there, so... Counsel, anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
That being said, adjourned.
Thanks, Norm. Thank you.